Okay, we're ready to go. So, back to our city manager for the rest of the city.
There's some more things that are in passing and get some direction from you. It's just we gotta keep fighting. How's that sound? Um, so we have several things coming up. One, I'm trying to go forward if this might fall out. Uh, we have local official states coming up and I know Sherry's going next because she's committed to council. It's that luncheon, uh, we already have or sending money to register you for.
It's the day the elections later.
What's the date? Isn't it?
It's, uh, January thirtieth.
I request Representative Notwell.
What's that?
Request Notwell. Is this for the league? Yes, where you get to repair?
Kami does that.
Request Notwell. Wait, you looked at me like that was the weirdest thing. I think it was making no sense.
Request Notwell.
I want Notwell's team. So I can give him a hard time.
So is that all five?
I will, uh...
Jared's a no.
I will...
One more time on the date?
Thirteenth.
Oh, January?
So I have four going, going, gone. Okay. So the four minus Jared.
Five minus Jared.
Are you correct? We'll get you ready to be traded for that.
Go Jared.
Um...
We have millions.
So we have, the next thing we have coming up is, uh, it will be kind of close up. ICSC and we heard a lot from last year, you thought that we don't want to waste all that money sending appropriate staff and...
Don't want to spend all that money.
Don't want to spend all that money.
Versus waste.
Yeah. It's not a waste. It's good, but our economic development team knows what the contracts we made and does part of the best down there anyway, so.
I think a lot of them need to be council member.
Hey, you didn't want to nominate somebody?
Nominate Nicole.
I actually maybe could go to this one.
No way.
No, I actually could. I maybe could.
I was, I was...
Yeah, I actually maybe could.
I'll second.
It's, uh, uh, May nineteenth through the twenty-second.
Well, wait a minute.
No, 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 you can't knock out that.
This is one.
You already committed. Talk amongst yourselves.
Check something.
Wow.
Okay, that, so we'll let her check her calendar. I do think, I think some, I think, and I think...
We like to put some words in there. It does well for us, but, uh, I've been younger with, and I've realized that it's clear to see to have the right staff put down and the right people put down and, and sometimes you use them too much. But I think it was a good trip last year to be located on what goes on down there. I have more businesses and hopefully some basic work on this. Just saying. Hey, Nicole's out still.
I would rather not.
She's still looking.
Trying to look up some, some travel dates that I was potentially doing. So let me, so let me, let me get back to you. So if I, if, if, but for this travel conflict, I can't...
So if you're first, who's the second?
Nicole.
Nicole's the second?
She's the first. If she can't go, who's the second?
Okay.
Sherry's the second?
Sherry.
Okay.
Second. I saw her work master sleeve down there last year.
Okay. Um... We have, uh, our, let's say body that we write and get in contact with this. We're working their calendar when they're in session with, to time along with, with our budget and try not to hit a council meeting. So we're not there during a council meeting. Trying to make everything align, start aligning. We're looking actually right now, we're gonna talk to Pat, see what our chances are to get into, so our new budget officials back there. You know, just A cup transmission, our general, we lay out for them, uh, June third through the eighth. And we're, and we're looking by direction what, who you want to send.
June third.
And who you think is gonna be most effective.
Where's this one?
If I could get to the current.
This is the D.C.
Okay. So Clint and Nicole on Washington, ICSC with Sherry. With Sherry, you talk, come about Washington.
No, I'm totally, totally getting it.
Okay.
Um, just let me know. I'm good with you for sure about ICSC.
What's the staff's desire in terms of the number of council on?
Uh...
Potentially on the D.C. trip. One, or do we need two, or?
I think it would be good to find, have one that's been connected, understand what we're doing, and then I think it works well and have one that's gonna kind of take that out. Does that make sense to you?
So as we get split up and...
So it worked out great when Nicole returned and Nicole's been actually hasn't worked in our city too, so she gets the turf and the way out there, but, um, so I look for your direction. If you all want to sit off my way.
And if somebody else, I mean, I don't...
Let's try how weak I can.
I was gonna say, wouldn't that be Jared? Could...
Yeah, I, I would like to, but there's no way I can do this. We can do it.
Yeah, that's good. Go Clint.
Like I say, I'm, uh, I can probably work it out, but if somebody else would rather than I'm...
We'd love to have, uh, I think, one time we have, we split up, um, and sometimes that's gonna happen.
Yeah.
To provide our, our call.
See if he can do that. Yeah, yeah. Not one I know I can.
So if I get this right, ICSC, okay. Utopia Saint Towns is April twenty-fourth through twenty-six. With Saint George, Utopia Saint Towns. Who's attending?
Yes.
Is that a giggle or?
Always flick over it.
Well, 'cause I, 'cause I know how your calendar is.
Twenty-fourth through the twenty-sixth.
It is the twenty, twenty, yes, twenty-four through twenty-six, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Usually it's just Wednesday night, Thursday, Friday. We got, uh, Nicole, Sherry, Clint, and Watts.
Okay, Brett, just a comment. The twenty-fourth is a scheduled meeting night for us here, which is a budget review night. We also have the twenty-second, which is ICSC, which is scheduled to be our public hearing, so.
Yeah, we can't change those dates. We, we knew that. Today we start looking at that. We're gonna have to make some adjustments in product path. I mean, it would be our...
So only one of us has gone to ICSC, so we still have the, the May one, right? And then it's just the league one, so.
And Washington-D.C. conflicted last year, but we've got, our city's a week later this year, so we're June twelfth to approve the budget, so we have to be okay with that.
That was one of the first things. And then, uh, we're actually still speculating on the Utopia Saint Towns because only they were in our case, you know, the county managers association meetings, they always be at it a few days prior. So I, I said, okay.
It must be that.
That we just...
They don't have a list that on...
And so if, if three of us stayed and didn't go to Utopia Saint Towns, would that make sense?
Uh, I'm certainly not having a budget meeting without maybe a president, if you ten those, but, uh, I get, we can always try, but I don't think it's as strong as being here. That's my opinion.
So you think that's, I mean, we have to change the budget?
We'll do some adjustments.
Okay.
We try very hard, but we don't set those dates where we sit and watch the D.C. trip. We avoid our council schedule. Okay? Someone's writing all that down, Kami? Right? Okay.
I'll give you a few.
Is there any other comments or direction you want to, questions you have for me?
Don't give me a hotel that's about to be changed.
Okay, no hotel or station.
Oh, and me either.
Right. I'm creating, 'cause I know.
No, I, I'm glad you said that because, yeah, I, I want me to hotel down there.
Two hotels, two hotels. Okay.
Okay, sorry, what was your last point?
Any other questions you have of me and direction you need for the next couple of weeks?
Um, no, and I should have brought this up a while ago, but, um, just so you guys know, I went to the, um, it was just a breakfast meeting at Trans Jordan.
Yes.
And do you want me to bring that up now? Yeah, no?
Uh, you can't.
Just, I did go, we're not part of Trans Jordan. We're not on that board or anything, 'cause we don't have buy-in to the, to the garbage out there, right? And, um, but maybe we should, or maybe we shouldn't. It might be a good thing to look at and understand why we would or why we wouldn't, just to readdress that. So I talked to Mark, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I talked to Mark and he's gonna, you know, put a bunch of numbers and things like for that.
What costs to buy into that? So that actually changes your tipping fee when you join that, Draper, Midvale, West Jordan, South Jordan, trying to think what, Ursus and Ball with that. Old and the landfill. Um, but there's a pretty big price tag to buy in. Uh, if we took general fundraise to buy into that, then we would lessen our tipping charge, which would reflect on our Wassa front bill. And I, and I, I, we look at years going as well.
I think it's like one point five million or something.
Yeah, to buy in.
So anyway, it's just continued to...
So bringing the number out when we get down.
Yeah, we just wanna know the information and what I ask him.
It's could be escalated upon, uh, but, uh, it's every, we're always competing against our other general fundraisers, like...
Yeah. But just, just, um, I asked him to, to help me understand, you know, why we're not part of it, why it would be advantageous to it or not, so that we have, always have that information to make those kind of decisions. 'Cause I was not aware, obviously, when I first got on the garbage board that, you know, we're in a special service district. You don't just leave. We don't just get to say, hey, here's our RFP. It makes more sense to go with this company. We're, we're giving you our notice. You don't get to do that. We have to petition the county to get out of our agreement with that. And I'm not even suggesting that, that we're considering that. We did the, you know, the pricing and it was good and, um, that's how we're at right now. But, um, I just think it's always important to have that understanding and that knowledge of why we're not part of that and if we should or should not be.
Yeah, I wonder if that would be information required to have more land.
Yeah, down.
Out, out by, uh...
It's huge. It's huge. It's on the, on the south end of the lake. The tipping fees out there are like ten bucks.
Yeah, it's, it's way down.
Way. So, anyway, because they're, they're, obviously, they're on their last sale at Trans Jordan and, um, that's a problem. Um, that's why we take our garbage. And with the change in the recycling business, that's also increasing what's going to the landfill. So their projections on how long that sale's gonna last are gonna be changing because a bunch of the garbage is now coming to landfill instead of going through the recycle, so. So, you know, we're gonna be impacted by that pretty dramatically at some point, so I just think it's really important for us to understand, you know.
So that sounds like a perfect future agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we have to work with Mark to do some numbers.
I just wanted you guys to be aware of that. I, I asked that ball to start rolling.
I'm sure you talked about it. It was a good discussion to refresh my memory that we've had before many, many years ago. And it actually is, I think it was like three quarters of me know it back then, but it still was competing against other companies. Uh, I have on here stakeholders, uh, literally you guys talked about last meeting. I don't know what direction you want me to do with that.
I think, uh, I think we probably as, as a council, just need to all have some input on that and, uh, obviously that, a circulated draft. And that's our, that's our responsibility. It's what we said we do, so, and I'm willing to, to pitch in and, and help get that ball rolling too, so. But along with that, just additional follow-up items from the last meeting, we helped it ties into that, just a couple of follow-up items that I wanted to, to touch on. Um, one, another component we talked about was the compensation. So I wanna know what the, the rest of the council's feelings are at this point on visiting that component. Um, and another one, basically, that it was a result of, just an email I saw today, was just want to request that, Mary, you turned in your, that presentation that was part of the public meeting.
That was, that's, that's, is your, is that a request? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Oh, I'd be happy to do that.
I know that I've, my understanding is that staff's asked for that twice to this point. And that was part of a public meeting, so we should have had that.
We had a couple.
We had an email on that, have a major question.
I'll, I'll get it to them.
And then we did one again today.
Okay. Yeah, but the, I, I think it's important to make sure that...
I'm happy to.
We have that available. And the last piece, again, all tying back to the, that last meeting, some of the follow-up items is, um, Mayor, have you turned in your purchasing card to the city?
No, I have not. I will happily get that to them tomorrow. Okay.
Um, I think that was direction that was fairly clearly given.
They're happy to do it tomorrow.
Last meeting, so I would like to make sure that that happens, um...
And I'm sure staff will be happy to send you guys an email as soon as that's done.
Okay, I'm, I'm, oh, honestly, I'm a little disappointed that that hasn't happened yet. I thought that was pretty clear after the last, the last meeting that, uh, that that hasn't happened, um, in light of some of those things. Um, and that's why I wanted to follow up on it, 'cause I haven't heard any communications that it hasn't. And, uh, again, it's, it's frustrating to me that after all of the discussion that we've been through, that, that that hasn't happened.
It'll happen tomorrow.
I will say for, hello, Cracker, all those purchasing cards have been turned off though. No purchases could have been made with them, correct? Those cards have been canceled. Even though he hasn't turned it in, he couldn't have used it anyhow. So we have to do that precaution.
As per direction of council back in November.
But that's, that card should still be turned in to the city. It's the city's card.
Should have been one term.
Yes. So that's all I have on the follow-up. I guess the question...
As far as the compensation, yeah, we definitely need to look at it again.
Okay, is there any information you want to look at, or is it just gonna...
We need, well, we need to, as a council, we need to assess what his actual duties are going forward and what reason the compensation is.
Okay. Again, these are all items that we said that we were gonna address.
So if you have any questions with that, want staff, give direction, staff, yes, no, through an email?
I think we, yeah, we need to work out amongst ourselves, get a draft better done. I think we need to maybe give ourselves a deadline to have that done by the end of this week.
So, partners, to be clear, uh, because compensation, are you gonna make it? Are you looking to make a change? If you are, when you give some day notice before that, other hearing?
Other hearing, correct. Well, I think, obviously, heading, we've got two weeks till our next meeting, um, before that could be acted on. Again, again, I, to Jared's point, I think we, we circulate amongst the council some discussion, um, on that item. Obviously, make sure that Brett's in the loop on that discussion.
Yeah, and then you can get whatever notice we need to.
And then, like I say, I, I don't know that we can say at this moment, yes, to plan on that, but I think we need to have that discussion, 'cause that's something that we said that we were going to follow up on. Okay?
Uh, unless some other director...
So we will get the letter to you by Friday, Close Business Friday.
Uh, also, per, uh, the council's request, you asked us to put together that list. Did you see anything else we need to add or take away from that list? You had a chance to look at that?
I, I would, and I apologize if I can't remember, just because we did also receive an email from a, from a very upset citizen that the way to analyticals, um...
The survey.
A survey went out and very upset about that. How do we want to proceed in those types of things?
I actually, I, I wasn't aware that they were attaching all of our names to the survey like that. I think it should be coming from the city, not the mayor and council. He was up, for those who didn't see, he was upset that it was coming from the mayor and took exception to that. So I mean, but then it goes on the list to all the council members as well.
If you see that, Mary, it's...
I don't think he was copied down.
I, I agree with that. It's why we make sure.
That's just safe.
First I heard it, so I don't have any problem with it. Okay, well, I'll get it for you.
And maybe that should be just the policy, those should just simply come from the city and that way, um, it's put down, it'll be presented to us, but it, but it being called down by the city.
I say, I, again, I can understand the frustration of the resident in, in light of, you know, everything else there, but again, um, I want our residents to still care about our community. And still want to engage in, you know, in these types of surveys and tho, and those types of things, because, um, that's all important and we just...
Much rather have it come from the city than any...
Any city, though. I, yeah, I agree.
That was the only...
I'm gonna write that down what someone is.
Exactly. But that, that was the only, like, thing I had to worry about stakeholders and stuff. We should probably make sure that those types of things are just simply from the city.
I will review that stakeholder list one more time. I'll be honest, I did a few days ago and, that was a few days ago, and a lot of things have filled the very limited brain capacity I have since then, so I need to review it again.
Yeah, it's a big list, uh, but I, I wonder, did it go too broad or not broad? I'd like some correction.
I will, I will review again and if I, if I have comments, I'll make sure that...
By Friday, right?
That all the council is aware of what, what I see there.
I mean, it, it is a good list. It's, it's lengthy. My only thought going through it was I, I don't know that I would take anything off, but, you know, is it too much or is it too little? I think maybe we also need to get kind of standing direction that if this, you know, if city staff are, are contacted by anyone with, you know, you know, city information or their... 'Cause a lot of times, I guess what public doesn't understand is that a lot of times people will contact the city and ask for the mayor, thinking that that's the representative of the city. So we just need to make, maybe give some standing direction, but if that's the case, if there's an inquiry of that nature, it needs to go to the city.
Yeah, the mayor, the city manager, there gets a lot of emails, um, that I don't even get, uh...
Now, it's part of our concern, was that information wasn't being shared with us.
But, you know, it's like today, you forced them onto me today to, to address and, uh, yeah, suppose the jury thing that we got right on, uh, ETA, I think it's gonna be presented tonight, so, yeah.
So we kind of have to think about those kinds of communications that come, we need to do.
If you have a harem.org, that email address is harem cities. It's not yours. It's not private. It's harem cities. Just, am I correct, John?
Yeah.
So why add your name in front of it? It's still harem cities.
It's still the cities.
Email.
Absolutely. Well, it's gonna take a little bit of time to, to fine tune that communications piece, as, as again, we, we asked that to funnel through Brett, out to the rest of, of us, and I think as we have these other various new assignments and make those contacts and things, I think we'll be able to add a letter. I think we'll be able to get our stakeholders to, to understand what the expectation is.
Yeah, with that said, um, I, yeah, you know, our government affairs person will be heavily involved with me when those things come across to make sure we don't miss anything that the public's asking of, of you all or...
Oh, we recognize that we're making a, a lot of additional work and requests and things with you and it's, I know it's not easy, but it's much appreciated.
Yeah, what's good is you've hired a communication team and had enough time to get their feet wet and, you know, more so is, can't pull that way forward, 'cause they're part of our job.
It's only your feet wet. You might want to change your clothes.
Okay. I think, uh, uh, just for time, but I think we'll be having a, a snow bladers report coming up probably in the next meeting. I know while we're going, had a few...
I didn't, I don't think we had any last year.
Miss Rose, we missed here and there. That's typical. This is hard. Uh, we missed the cold, cold sack. Sorry about that.
Christmas.
But you didn't complain.
No, I never do. I tell my family every time when my husband complains, I say, no, no, cold sacks.
I need someone, I need someone back in the cold sack room. Anyway.
Don't treat me differently. That's what it does.
Uh, you know, we're, we're very cautious. We take that, that part of our role here in the city, that that's one of the things that, uh, you've always supported well and our, our community appreciates it. But, uh, here again, I will challenge Andy, if you want to get in a tow truck, we want our drivers on a snowy night, spend all night. He feels like you're going around circles and it's easy to miss a street, but we do have a tracker system on, helps, helps us understand if we miss a street and go back and get it.
Is there an option of one street and a hot chocolate? Is that an option?
I'm in, I'm in. That's, that's awesome.
Put me on the weekend list.
Lost me in cold, lost me in cold all night.
Yeah, on the Wednesday.
Sure appreciate you.
I started like nine AM on Saturday.
I'm dead serious, though. I would really like to do that, but on a weekend.
It's crazy. It's crazy. Um, also, I got the opportunity to, uh, your police chief went out and, went out, uh, he went out New Year's Eve with some other friends, staff were out on New Year's Eve to make sure that, uh...
Just to show that those officers are working on those nights and crazy shifts that they got support by their administrative staff. It's a dead night, uh, sorry, your city was too quiet. It's boring.
Yeah, that's very, that's very disappointing.
Went to a little out party, uh, went down there and it's actually a, a great party. They was doing salsa dancing.
The ride along first, Brett. You should schedule a ride along every night.
I'm sorry, those who do ride along, let's see a little more activity and I can say it was very boring. I said, chief, take me home at two.
Does the chief know salsa now? That's what I want to know.
I don't want to know. What does he say? No, I'm staying. I'll watch my own channel. Anyway, uh, they're doing a great job. Appreciate Nicole's comments, um, but, um, it's like Monty again. Uh, it's taking a whole team to do finance and budget. It takes a whole team to do a police department. And we recognize that every single day, and the reason I thought about Monty is he's also over fleet management and, uh, we've been crashing some vehicles, unfortunately. One was created when officers didn't get hit or killed during that, 'cause if she would have been a second sooner or whatever, she would have been, been putting a car in the truck. Um, these are realisms. We hope it doesn't happen to us. Uh, our team is making sure we have the fleet underneath this, so we don't do our job to our residents. And, um, what he's done, he doesn't want to talk about, uh, they didn't own the vehicles out, we're getting a little short. Uh, I asked the, the auto body to park trucks behind, 'cause we had two of them out front that needed repairing. They were damaged pretty significantly. And I just tell you, that's part of the business. It really is. I'm sorry, and Clint knows this all too well. Emergency vehicles get crashed a lot. 'Cause people don't seem very, you know, kind of surprising. The one truck was hit, right on the emergency nine-one-one panel. I bought, I had to show you. Anyway, that's my, uh, CM updates.
All right, uh, so that's the end of our work meeting. Now, the question is, do we want to stay ahead for the closed meeting first, or do we want to go into the other room and then come back for closing?
Better than being in your own agency and then any non-essential staff that's other than you be here for close.
Oh, that's a great idea.
So I'll step motion.
No, I'll send it. Oh, I make a motion that we go.
But, uh, here again, I will challenge Amy, if you want to get in a foul truck, more drivers on a snowy night, spend all night. He feels like you go around circles and it's easy to miss a street, but we do have a tracker system on. Helps, helps us understand if we miss a street and go back and get it.
Is there an option of one street and a hot chocolate? Is that an option?
I admit, I admit it. That's, that's awesome.
Put me on the weekend list.
Lost me at cold. I lost me at cold all night.
True, appreciate.
I started like nine AM on Saturday.
I'm dead serious, though. I would really like to do that, but I'm on a weekend.
It's crazy. It's crazy.
Also, I got about to, uh, your police chief went out and, went out. He went out New Year's Eve with some other command staff were out on New Year's Eve to make sure that, uh. Just to show that those officers are working all nights, some crazy shifts that they got support by their administrative staff. It's a dead night. Uh, our year's city was too quiet. It's boring.
Yeah, that's very, that's very disappointing.
Went a little loud party, uh, went down there and it's actually a, a great party. It was doing salsa dancing.
Ride along first, Brett. You should schedule ride along every night.
Sorry, those who do ride along, like, see a little more activity and I can say it was very boring. I said, chief take me home with you.
Does the chief know salsa now? That's what I want to know.
I don't want salsa.
What does he say? Rick, I don't know. I'm staying. I'll watch my own channel. Anyway, uh, they're doing a great job. Appreciate the Nicole's comments, um, but, um, I'm saying Monty again. Uh, he's taking a whole team to do finance and budget. He's taking a whole team to do a police department. And we recognize that every single day, the reason I thought about Monty is he's also over fleet management and, uh, we've been crashing some vehicles, unfortunately. One will create one more option that didn't get or kill during that because she would have been a second sooner or wherever, she would have been in between a car and a truck. These are realisms. We hope it doesn't happen to us. But our team is making sure we have the fleet underneath this so we don't do our job to our residents and, um. Cody's done his head. He doesn't want to talk about, uh, they didn't own the vehicles out. We're getting a little short. Uh, I asked the, the auto body to park trucks behind because we had two of them out front. They need to repair. They were damaged pretty significantly. And I just tell you, that's part of the business. It really is. I'm sorry, and Clint knows this all too well. Emergency vehicles get crashed a lot. Because people don't seem very, you know, kind of surprising. The one truck was hit right on the emergency nine-one-one panel. I bought. Anyway, that's my, uh, CM updates.
All right, um, so that's the end of our work meeting. Now, the question is, do we want to stay ahead for the closed meeting first, or do we want to go into the other room and then come back for closing?
Better than being in all agency and then any non-essential staff that doesn't need to be here for close.
All it's a good idea. So, I'll step in motion.
No, it's, oh, I make a motion that we go.
You made a motion to close the.
I make a motion that we close the, the council.